You broke the hammer.
Quality. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Doherty City Council meeting is a special meeting tonight. And so we are having a roll call. The, we know that Caesar will not be here this evening and Zidell is on her way, so we will expect her momentarily. Oral communications, is there anyone wishing to speak to items on the agenda? If so, please step forward. See no one step forward. Let's go ahead and go with item three, which is the public hearing to receive public input, discuss draft redistricting maps, and identify focus maps for inclusion in the ordinance to adopt new district boundaries for the Doherty City Council. So. I'll let, Dan, are you gonna go ahead and do the?
Yeah, just, just a moment, Mayor Finley. This is our, our fourth public hearing and while it is a public hearing, we, we are conducting it as a workshop to go through some actual maps and get the council's feedback on those and see if we can focus in on a particular map. We have with us tonight to do that, Jeff, and I'm gonna say your last name correctly, one time, Simonetti. Jeff Simonetti from National Demographic Corporation. And he will be leading us through the technical aspects of that and responding to your questions and Mr. Simonetti, it would obviously be up to the council, we, we had talked about perhaps starting off with the most recent map that had been submitted, and I think, believe that that's map 107.
Sure. So, can everybody hear me?
Well, and, and we have an arrival.
Okay, I see our council members here. Councilmember Zidell Parks Karachi.
Okay.
See Jack Jack. His ideas are heavily influenced by Jack.
Yes.
What's going on, Jack Jack?
All right, well, good evening, everyone. So, I guess I gotta get right up to the microphone to be able for everybody to hear me, but so, we had talked, talked about two of the maps that, that we had gotten direction from the council on to, to, to look at. The most recent one is map 107. So that was the map here that we were attempting to, to make sure that each of the districts remain contiguous. So as you can see here, we've, we've done that and they, we have a contiguous and population balanced map. And here we can show you district by district. So you'll see District One again captures the, the northern area of the city, including the area in the mountains. And then we've got sort of three or four lateral districts between two, three, and four, capturing the, the eastern portion and then the central portions of the city. District Six runs essentially along the, the 210 freeway and then is, has an, has an area in north of the 210 freeway bounded by Bradbury Avenue. And then District Seven remains in the southwest corner of the city. What you'll see here is again, the blue dotted line are the existing districts. So you can see where the, the changes have taken place in terms of where the, where the current and, and existing districts are. The other focus map that was requested was to look at is map 105. And so this again is a non-contiguous district, or non-contiguous map. So as you'll see here with 105, District Four again is separated between the, it, the northern area that is north of Mount Olive Drive. And then has its western portion around Duarte High School, then towards the, the western edge of the city. District One runs just to the east of it and then again along the, the northern portions of the city. And you'll see here again that District Three essentially pushes into the, the western parts of a couple of your current districts. And then rounding out again, your areas here, both District Six and Seven mostly are south of the 210 freeway. So those are the two maps that the council requested that we focus on. And so now what I would like to do is get some feedback from the council. So do you like the maps as is? Are there changes that you'd like to see to the maps? And just give us direction on, on either 105, 107, or any of the maps that you have before you. And the idea here is that we would like to get direction on you, from you of whether this is a map that you'd want, one of these maps that you'd want to move forward on as is? Or are there changes that you'd like to make so that we can bring that back to a council meeting coming up and then move forward with that? Dan or Ms. Flanders or anything that you'd like to add to the, to the discussion before we move forward?
Oh, there you go. Councilmembers, Mayor, Mayor Potem, I do ask that as you look through these maps and consider which one that you would like to elevate for a final map to vote on, that, you know, we continue to make findings on the record as to, you know, communities of interest, continuity, et cetera, and the other provisions of the Fair Maps Act. Otherwise, I will let you count that in. Thank you.
Okay, so can I make a motion to elevate 107?
You can, however, because this is a public hearing, we do, after the presentation, have to open the public hearing for any public comments.
Open for, okay.
Yeah.
Mayor. If you don't. When, what date or would be the last hearing we have to submit a map?
Okay, so the process needs to be completed by no later than April 17th of, of this year. And because we have to pass this by an ordinance that takes two readings, a, an ordinance can be introduced at a special meeting, it cannot be, the second reading cannot be at a special meeting. So
So it has to be a regular meeting?
The second reading has to be at a, at a regular meeting. So I would, Dan, I would guess there's a meeting in April prior to the 17th?
It's April 8th.
April 8th.
15, 29. April 12th.
April 12th, yes.
And just apologies, just for also clarification, it has to be five days in between the first hearing and the second hearing. So for example, if April 12th is the last regular meeting, you would have to, one, two, three, four, five, Wednesday before, basically. Hold the special meeting.
Okay, okay. If we elevate a map, can we elevate more than one map to work on? Since, let's just say we have how, a whole month left, right, to make a final decision on a map that we would like to, to go with?
You can, but for the purposes of the ordinance, when you, when you pass that, it needs, you need to have one map that you're moving forward towards the ordinance. So it would be my recommendation that if this is something that, that you want to make edits to any of these maps, we should get, you should give me direction on that tonight, so that we can go back and bring that to, to a next council meeting or council meeting coming up shortly, so that that can move forward. We have some time, but time is also limited.
Got it, thank you.
Good evening, sir. I was just wondering, um, on this, on, on map seven, my District Seven, it stopped at, is that the Woody Road it stopped at?
Sure, let me zoom in. So the dividing line there, yes, is, since to the north, yes, is Duarte Road.
Oh, why doesn't it go all the way to the freeway? I mean, wow.
So the, the reason for that, again, is we, we have to make sure that we're population balanced. And if you added in that, that amount of population, I believe you would be out of population balance to, if, if we move that further north.
Excuse me?
If, so you said, what would, if we would move that further up?
Till the 210 freeway.
I believe, and again, I'd have, have to look at the
I think it's Evergreen.
The, the census blocks there. I believe that, well, that's, let's take a look, let's take a look at the census. So this is on, you're looking at 107, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Give me one moment to transition there. Okay. I'm transitioning over to the, to the mapping software, so you can see.
Okay.
One moment. Okay, can you see here, so, um, so this area in here, actually with, with the way that, that, that 107 is currently drawn, you, you could theoretically add in that area that you're mentioning. So let me, let me just show you what, what that would look like. So you, you add in that area, again, we have to kind of work with what the census blocks are.
Okay.
The, the only challenge that you'd have there is that if you add in that area, you'd have a, again, a very, you'd have a very small sliver of, it, it still would be contiguous, but that, that, that district, District Six would be less compact because now you have a, you have a much kind of smaller area connecting the north, northern part of the district there in. But in terms of population balance, let me just double check, I think. Check that right now. Whoops. Wrong one. Um. You, you'd only be able to add a, a portion of that, again, because your, your population balance would, would, would be off if you added in, I believe, the whole area. So hang on one second.
For, what, what are we trying to accomplish there?
I just don't like the idea of losing my Walmart.
Of moving what?
Losing Walmart. My Walmart.
So who's gonna get Walmart?
District Six.
So that would be Caesar that's gonna get it.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
So if you were at, if you were to add in, so that, I, so with the way that's currently drawn, does that, that includes the Walmart?
Yeah, yes. If it goes all the way up to Evergreen, it does include the Walmart.
Okay.
Okay, other questions or comments?
So is that balanced like that, if you do that?
Yes, it's population balancing.
So it's possible.
It is possible.
Okay, then let's go up to the northeastern part of the city.
We transitioned back to the interactive review map, because it's easier to do. Okay.
Okay. Um, keep one window like this. Um, okay, the purple district, and I don't know what the number of the district is.
District Four.
District Four, okay. To make that less
near.
Yeah. Um, could we go ahead and drop that down a street? And then the part show you, the part over on the west side, move that up. And then in District Five, drop, that would be dropped down a little bit into District Two, but then move District Two over into the area that is District Four. So you're kind of doing a round robin thing there?
Okay, let's go to the the, the, the challenge is gonna be with the, with, with your census blocks there, but
Let, let's see, I, I wanna see that.
It certainly would make it a little bit more compact.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're saying put, oh, hold on. My screen again.
Drop, drop purple down.
Okay, so what you're saying is this area here.
Right now.
No, it's Roy Oaks, you go to District Four, Roy Oaks Drive. Down the bottom.
Maybe include the south side of the street too.
Okay, but like, again, though, this is, this is all one census block here. So if you, you, you can't, to, to make that contiguous, you make that area contiguous with the, with the western part of this district, you, you can't split those.
No, so why, why don't we, um, I'm just curious if we can look at, let's just say District Five. Um, like Oak Haven, right, that's 54. I, I'm trying to widen that, um, that street of Royal Oaks. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
So can we use that census, census block of let's just say 43, 15, 24, I'm going from left to right right now. So I think it's 43, 15, 24, 128, and all those, right?
You're gonna be out of, you're gonna be out of population balance, well.
I, I understand. And then, um, District Five will move down more onto District Two going down south on the southwest portion of it.
Okay.
So in addition to that, um, I think it's 50, I can't see. We, can we zoom in a little bit? Thanks, Jeff. Okay, much better. Okay, I think that's 50, 54, Oak Haven. Right? And then 21.
Is okay.
Much better. Can you zoom back out now, if you don't mind? Thank you. Zoom back out a little bit. Thank you. Zoom back out just a little bit more. A little bit more, okay, go back up. Can't see the numbers, the precincts anymore.
So you're gonna have to add something into District Five?
Oh, I get it, I get it, I'm on it. Just hold on. So I'm, I'm trying to widen District Four right now. Um, can we zoom back in so I can see the precincts? Thank you. Okay, so maybe perhaps Atlin, is that, is that 96? Yeah, may, maybe we can wind that a little bit. I'm just trying to make it more uh-oh.
Can you transpose the census blocks on top of this map so we can see where they are?
When you, so, um, the, the census blocks they, they're, well, they're bounded by
Okay, so, all right, so now District Four at least is wider, right? And now it's 5.56% higher. If you look at District Two, it's actually 2.79% higher, right? So now District Five needs to go ahead and tick on. Can you scroll down a little bit? I'm just trying to go ahead and take that delta right there. I, I'm trying to take 3% from District Two. So
You'd have to take some out of District Four as well.
Sure, absolutely. So I can certainly tick District, if that's the case, can you go towards the right a little bit more, on the left a little bit more? Sorry. My bad. Yes, sir. Okay.
Great, now for someone that's gonna run against me.
Okay, so why don't we take I need to take a little bit more from District Four. Okay, I got it. So why don't we, why don't we take, um, uh, I see, okay, so, um, the 27, right, that's a road, I'll take that, and then I will yep, and then, and then, and then 75. And then and then 344. Right, 62 and 75.
Well, it just, let's, yeah, but if you take the 344.
No, no, I get, I, I, hear me out, yeah, take, take 5, 5, uh, 4, 6, awesome.
A bunch of seniors there.
And you're
5, 4, 6, awesome, Pop's Road.
Wait a minute, that's not contiguous, Sam.
You're non-contiguous and you're not population balanced.
Wait, wait, just, what the? Wow, there's a lot of people around, around that area, huh?
Well, that's the senior complex, the Anderson Wardy Terrace.
Okay, so take out 344, that looks like there's a lot of people over there. So I'll just go and take out 3%, but I'm, I'm taking out 8%. I don't want that. And then if I take 5, 4, 6, what would that, how, how would that look like?
And put that into five?
Yes, sir. Damn. Wow, there are a lot of people living over there too.
Then Sam, what about taking out 168 and 43? That'd be a natural.
Um, 168, can you reference me?
No, wait a minute, because if you take that out, then it'll just be a point that you'd be meeting on.
Okay, so take out 5, 4, 6, that's way too much, that's way too many. How about the Amberwood area? 44.
So Districts Four and Five are kind of jacked now, right?
Not, yeah, I, I think if I, if I just take Amberwood and, and
See the problem, yeah, the problem is there, you got that census block.
What a census block. Of course, that probably works right around Westminster Gardens, doesn't it?
Yep, that is Westminster Garden. Um, okay, 86 that, let's go towards, because number four has 5, 5 and a half percent more, right? I'm gonna go ahead and go, um, 48. Is that continuous? 485, can you scroll towards the left a little bit? Yeah, okay, so let's take 485. And see how that goes.
Probably gonna be too much.
Um, that's that senior complex, the pink one.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the pink one. And then
Across from City Hall.
Now I'm eight. I need something smaller, that, um, retract that, retract 485, let's take 15 and, and 24.
So your dad's idea is not sounding too bad right now.
What's that?
What about throwing 34 in there, Sam?
34, sure.
Population balanced, I mean, just double check, but
Okay.
And 34, I think is, no, that's not gonna be that senior complex on Highland. That looks, that's a better looking map than before, isn't it?
Yep, that is. Don't have that sliver anymore.
Let's go to the professional. Jeff, does that look like a better looking map?
I, I mean, it's, it's, you, you've got population balance, so
But I mean, don't you think it looks a little bit more compact? Jeff?
I I need your professional opinion, Jeff. I, that, that is not necessarily the definition of a compact map, but
It's compact domain.
Okay, so what's everybody think of that thing?
I feel like I'm like a Mississippi senator.
Okay, what's everybody else think of that? Okay, well, think about me.
Okay.
Think about me. No, come on.
I have no commercial areas to my
Doing this together. She's gonna share some bears with you. She's got more, she's got more bears than constituents.
Councilmembers, just as a quick reminder for the Fair Maps Act, aside from compliance with the US Constitution Council members, just as a quick reminder for the Fair Maps Act, aside from compliance with the US Constitution, California Constitution, Federal Voting Rights Act, the Fair Maps Act does have the four priorities in order, ranked order, the first being contiguity, the second being communities of interest, which is defined essentially as social and economic interests. The third is easily definable borders, so nothing kind of going through someone's yard, for example, and the last is compactness. Specifically, the Fair Maps Act does say that we do not take into account political affiliation, incumbency, or anything like that. So as you make your findings and present, you know, arguments in support of the maps, I do recommend that, you know, we make findings in those categories.
I think, I think that's appropriate.
I can't make findings and bears.
I was gonna say, I have a community of interest. Everybody's afraid of the bears up in mind.
That's right. That's a great.
I would legally say that is a valid interest.
I mean, honestly, it is, but still makes me feel bad that I'm gonna end up losing, like, my favorites. I love the nuns at San Antaresita.
I'm aiming to that.
Okay, so Jeff, you have anything that?
No, is, we're just, again, looking for direction on if this is a map that you're, if this is the map that you'd like to move forward on, or if there's other changes or recommendations that you'd like to make.
Tz, you have any thoughts?
I was just wondering if the districts get the numbers reshuffled.
What, what do you mean by that?
Cause like. So. I'll be honest, like, I. I have the original, what we currently have ingrained in my head, and so a lot of these puzzle pieces moving around. So, so am I purple? I mean, if, right, because that's, that's where I'm, because then that says four, which is, you know, I just was wondering, you know, it's no secret. There's an election at the end of this year, and not that the residents would get confused, but is there a reason why it couldn't be again? Oh, I don't know.
I mean, you can, you can number the, the.
However.
Whatever, whatever.
Okay, that's.
The challenge that you have is that, that those, those numbers are tied to an election sequence, so. We want for continuity of elections, want to make sure that, that. Essentially, that those line up with, with the election numbers that, that you have, but again, that's, it's up to you as to how you want to number those.
Okay, and then what's the definition of compact? Like, I know compact, other than compact for your makeup, but like to have it boxy, or I'm, I'm trying to understand.
What compact means is not reaching for a more distant population in sake of one that's closer.
Got it, okay.
That's why when we were talking about, about the question earlier. We can draw conclusions on that, right?
So in this current map, the one we're looking at now, District Four does kind of go across the city, yes?
Yes.
Mayor, I think your mic is on.
Is a demographic table automatically generated when you just switch those?
Yes.
That you can pull up?
Sure. One second. Pull that up right. Takes about ten seconds to load, but it's thinking, I promise.
You're doing a good job.
Okay, so here's the, here's, here's your demographic. So you've got. Okay, so you've, you still retain your two Latino majority citizen voting age population districts in District Six and Seven, you've got an eight point three five percent population deviation, and yeah, so you comply with the, with the population deviation, and again, you keep your two current existing majority districts for Latino C V A P in Six and Seven.
Can you show age? Is there one for age?
No, yeah, actually, yes, here we go, sorry. So there's, your age is right here in terms of for each one of the districts. Yeah, I can post that.
Yeah, that's if we end up going with this map.
Sure.
Chip, I'm sorry, you still looking at that, Joey? I was gonna ask you if you can go back up to the C, the C V A P. Could you, could you explain to me the total on that C V A P? What, the total would be just the total percentage of voters?
No, that's the, the total number of popular citizen voting age population. So this, this line here where you're seeing the two, four, four, five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's the total number of citizens within each district that are over eighteen.
Right, and then the total on the right-hand side.
Is the total for all districts.
Got it.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, so say this April seventeenth comes, and we select one of these maps, how soon will, I can't think of that company that does the. T Z, what's that, what's that company that we use to get all of the voting lists?
Oh. Oh. Yeah, I know.
Can't remember the name. How soon will they have this information?
I, I, I don't know who that, that is. So basically, so what we do is, I can tell you from, from, from what we do. So by April seventeenth, we will submit that to the LA County Register of Voters. They process that, and then from, from there, that's not something that I have control over in terms of.
Okay. Okay. Uh, how's everybody, everybody feeling about this?
Right.
So just a quick question. I know we have two more public hearings. This is the process of figuring out, you were doing the adding on or subtracting. So there's still the ability for anyone to submit maps.
Correct, yes. So anyone can submit a map that will be part of the public record, and it's up to the council whether they want to consider that or not.
Okay.
So what happens if we elevate this map today and somebody submits it for the next hearing, another map for the next hearing?
So again, they can, anyone can submit a map or testimony up and through the day that you pass a map.
Okay, so if I.
It'll be part of the public record, but it's not, and it's up to the, to the council's discretion as to whether they want to take action on that.
So hypothetically, we elevate this map today, and next public hearing, somebody submits another map, and we decide to go with that one, we can elevate that one, and that would be the final decision on that day, because we do need to do it before April seventeen, correct? So I'm trying to figure out the timeline here, right? Because I'm just gonna make a comment, I, I, we have another hearing before we need to finalize a map that we want to go forward with. I, I, I think that making a decision on a map today would be a haste to do, right? I, I love the idea that we have a workshop that we're being able to play with and see how it works. But for us to say, okay, I want to elevate this one, and this is the map that I want to go with, I don't think I would be doing myself any due diligence by doing that. So that's why I'm asking these questions.
If I may just quickly interject, so for example, because there were, let's call it one oh seven plus some additions, because that specific version of one oh seven was not yet published for seven days, and there were changes, we would want to publish it for seven days, make sure the public has a chance to look at it. So you would elevate a version of that, but for the next public hearing, that would be draft map one oh seven A, for example. Because I would not recommend, and the Fair Maps Act does require a seven-day publication period, for example, or just, you know, making it available for people to see. You can also hold as many public hearings, special meetings as you want or need in order to consider this map, potential one oh seven A, any maps you currently have, or any new maps that do come along regarding the date, as we just wanted to say, kind of, you know, maybe the last day to, to vote on a final map, the first reading of an ordinance be, you know, April sixth, sorry, seventh or eighth, so that it meets the deadline. So today, for example, you may say, hey, come back to us with the edits to one oh seven, we can call it one oh seven A, and then next public hearing, you can then say, you know, we want to vote on this as the draft map that comes forward. Or any other maps that get submitted in the meantime.
Right, okay, got it, thank you.
Okay. So councils. What is your pleasure?
Mayor, so we do need to open the public hearing because this is a question and presentation section.
Yeah, don't everybody speak at once out there. So. We are gonna open the public hearing right now. Have we received any notices?
We have not received any written notices, mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. Would anybody in the public like to speak right now? Seeing no one step forward, not even Jeff. We will close the public hearing, and we'll go into discussion right now.
Any more discussion?
Okay. Go ahead, Jody.
So one of the things that, about this process that has been a little off-putting for me is the census blocks. The census blocks are arbitrary blocks made by the US government for statistical analysis. They have no bearing on our local demographics or our communities of interest, and it even reads that in the definition of the census blocks, if you look it up on the US government website, that these census blocks are up to us to interpret for our own communities of interest. So when we look at these maps and we're trying different, different options, it's not ever gonna be perfect, because it was not intended for the use of communities of interest. It was just intended for the US government to be able to do their statistics. So I guess my thought on this is that when I'm looking at these maps to choose one, first, I think we all represent everyone in the city, so we're all here for anyone in the city. Second of all, I think that if we're going to continue to entertain these maps, and even others that are submitted, I just want everyone to keep in mind that the census blocks are not serving the purpose of our constituents, and so I just want to point that out in public record, because I want people watching this to understand that, and that's why it makes it even more difficult, because we're doing this from an arbitrary methodology that was not intended for the purpose that we serve for. So that's my comment. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, I guess my concern here, as it always has been, is confusing the public. Four years ago. Is that what it was? Four years ago, we were districted. We voted for it because we had to vote for it. We didn't want to vote for it, we had to. We all liked running at large, because we represent all of the city of Duarte. I personally think that districts fragment a city. People become very parochial in their thinking. So that was four years ago. Now here we are. And we're asking people to rethink exactly what they didn't really understand in the first place, and I'm not saying they didn't know what was going on, but I had a number of people, I know Zidle and Sam did too, that called him and said, hey, I want to vote for you. Sorry, you can't. So now we're asking people to go ahead, once again, screw with their voting so that we can meet some ill-defined laws by people that don't even know what my city looks like? Do they know that I have to go down probably a grade of about forty-five percent to get to a good part of my district? No. So I am not very close to the people in this proposed district. So that's my real problem with this. I'm not saying I won't vote for it, but it is a problem I have. And Ty, you, you did a, you did a great job on writing up what you did. I think we probably all only understood about one percent of it. Okay. Practicable is not the same as possible. I understand that. How does it relate to this? Because a lot of this has to do with where practicable you should follow these guidelines. So explain this to me.
So without disclosing anything that would, you know, potentially jeopardize any litigation strategy, if any, I do want to mention that, first of all, we don't have any court opinions as to the Fair Maps Act. Nothing has been settled, there's no judgment, so there's really nothing to help guide us other than the language that is used in the statute. And courts have, in the past, looked at the difference between the use of the words possible and practicable in inter, excuse me, in interpreting legislative statutes, and so the word possible essentially says if it can happen, it must happen, and here, because they use to the extent practicable, that does signal to us that there may be some discretion allowed. However, like any other of the priorities listed in the Fair Maps Act, you know, findings are required to be made, and the city needs to, you know, have the evidence in support of its decisions. So where practicable, if you can make, you know, provide facts, provide evidence, testimony, things like that, those are the things that a court would look at in interpreting whether the city's decision is valid and should stand.
Okay.
And if, if I may add just one thing, when we, just, there was discussion earlier related to the, to the census blocks, and I know that now you see upfront firsthand how those, how those are, and those are the building blocks that we have to work with. The one thing that I, that I want to make sure that, that the council and the public understands is that when we are building our maps, no matter what they look like, census blocks are the smallest category. No matter what they look like, census blocks are the smallest category in terms of information that we can get to, to move around. And it's the, it's the, the most granular piece of data that the U.S. Census Bureau gives us. If you were to, for example, split a census block or go, go anything further than that. The reason why that is a challenge is that it would be unofficial data, because you'd have to guess at which, what, okay, you know that there's. A hundred people in this census block, is it fifty on this side and fifty on that side? Is it seventy-five on this side and twenty-five on that side? There's, you can't get any further granular from the Census Bureau in terms of that, so that's. Why we're kind of living within the conditions that we have in terms of looking at the maps. I think that's important for the public to understand, that that's.
Okay.
Those are limitations.
So this new map that we've come up with, one oh eight.
Um, we can call it one oh eight, call it one oh seven revised, whatever you'd like.
I think it's probably important to do, maybe make it one oh eight, just so that we know that we kind of worked. On some stuff.
Okay.
Um, so we have a meeting a week from tonight and a hearing, not a week from tonight, a week from tomorrow. So if we take no action tonight, and this gives us the opportunity to look at this new map, number eight. Um, would you then be able to? Um, give us all that census data for map number one oh eight, so we can take a look at it. And see if we do kind of have communities of interest.
Yeah, I, I can get that, I can get that posted. Um, we can certainly get that posted prior to the seven days, so.
Okay.
I have the report, and it's a quick thing to get up onto the website, so if that's the direction of the council, I can. Again, that's.
Yeah, so just for clarification, um, because we're eight days away from our next meeting, if he gets it posted tomorrow, essentially. Um, you would be able to take action at the next public hearing regarding map one oh eight, or whatever else is posted by tomorrow.
Okay, um, however, how do my colleagues feel about that, Ty? Okay. Do we need to make a motion, Zidl, then?
We don't need to.
Do we need, do you want a motion on that?
You can give just direction, you don't need a motion.
Okay, does everybody like that then? Okay, um, Jody, just, we're going to rename our new map. One oh eight. And we won't do anything on it tonight. It will give us enough time that we can look all of this over. They're gonna. Jeff's gonna send us kind of that census data, um, so we can take a look at that, see where communities of interest are. Things like that. And then we can take action on it at the March eighth meeting. Okay, everybody like that?
Oh, just a quick clarification. Do, but we still have to do a fourth public here. Correct? I just wanted to make sure.
So this is the fourth public hearing, because it was adequately noticed and published as.
That's why you guys put the public here. So the next one will be the fourth one.
The fifth one.
Fifth one.
So originally, the next meeting would have been the fourth public hearing. However, staff discussed and determined that the council may choose to elevate one of the current maps that existed. To move forward as a final map, which is why this was made as a public hearing. However, the next meeting will also be a public hearing. So you have five.
So we're.
Four is the minimum under state law, and then you could go up as high as you want.
That's good, thanks.
Okay. Then, like I said, we're, we're kind of overachievers here, so we wanted five public hearings to give people as much.
And you can see so many people are just so interested about this.
Yeah. And Jeff, don't take it personally.
I know, we're good.
Okay, so, uh, do you, Dan, do you have direction on that?
We have a direction, Madam Mayor and Council, yes, we do.
Okay, so, um, do we need anything to talk about anything more? And so then that would bring us to item four, which is our adjournment, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, so we moved it second that we adjourn. So with that. It's a break.